All right. Good morning. It's 9:08 a.m. on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. Before we begin with the invocation, I know, Mr. Macias, you had an update on our livestream.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just so that you and the members of the Commission are aware that we are unable to stream the meeting live. That doesn't give us a problem in terms of being able to go forward. This is still an open meeting. We have notified the public or are notifying them that they can either come into the meeting to participate, or they can view the proceedings. Once the meeting is over, there'll be a recording of it available. It does not impede people that were scheduled to participate in the meeting virtually, but it does prevent us from having a live feed that is accessible to others or the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Macias, for that update. Okay, we'll move on to our invocation. This morning, we'll have our Deputy Fire Chief, Eric Grespin. Good morning, Deputy Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Good to see you all this morning. Let us pray. Oh, great and wonderful Creator of life, nature, and this universe, known by many names and true to be above all names. We humbly come before you as a united body that proudly calls Doñana County our home. We seek your blessing on all the people who have been called to lead this great community in which we live, interact, and work for the betterment of all. Help the individuals who make up this body of leadership to understand that they must first seek to learn what is needed in many areas throughout our county, rather than convince themselves that they know and understand the needs of the people who have placed them in these positions of leadership. Because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate, today remind us that we all are servants first and then leaders by example. And that is our duty to serve common good of all persons with whom we interact. Remind each of us, no matter where we live, we must unite to care for those who are ill and dealing with sickness. Provide to all that requested the wisdom and courage to know and do what is honorable. May we speak up when it is time to speak up and listen humbly when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of fairness, by the Spirit of integrity, kindness, and understanding. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold near to our hearts. And so let it be in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Grespin. Commissioner Reynolds, will you lead us in the pledge this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Brandy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ellens?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Present.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Present.
Chair Sanchez?
Present.
The Commission convenes as the Board of County Commissioners and the County Board of Finance in open session. Mr. Macias, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. No, there are no changes to the agenda.
All righty, then we'll move on to pet showcase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again for the knowledge of the individuals present with us today. The County Commission takes advantage at every meeting to promote the adoption of animals from the Animal Services Center. And so our Pets of the Week, this is our Cat of the Week, Merlot. Who wouldn't want to enjoy the season of love with some Merlot by their side? These descriptions are becoming more frisky every time I read them. I'm assuming it's because it's Valentine's Day coming up. Like the wine, I'm only getting better with age. I am mellow and sweet and love scratches. I also love to give gentle love bites, and I can hang out in your arms forever. This is Merlot, nine years old, a domestic shorthair, and it's available for adoption. Our Dog of the Week is Alec. I am a super happy-go-lucky boy that loves to go on walks with volunteers. I also love playing with my kennel mates. I do not get, I do get a little excited on walks and like to try to pull you in my direction, but I'm just super excited to be out. My ideal family is just as playful and as active as I am. Alec is two years old, medium-sized dog, and is available for adoption. And there'll be adoption events on the downtown mall this coming Saturday. And they also will have a Valentine's Day special, discounting some of the costs related to the adoption of animals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Okay, we'll move on to public input. If there are any members of the public that are here to provide input to the County Commission, we ask if you're here to speak on a specific agenda item, you wait until the discussion for agenda item has begun. Are there any members of the public here for public input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to staff input. Is there any staff input, Mr. Macias?
No, sir.
We have one, look.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Ms. Skipper.
Good morning, Chair Sanchez, Commissioners. Today, we are implementing a new procedure or a new communication of the county. It's called Doñana Salutes, and this was at the request of the emergency manager. So Ms. Bowen is here today representing them. We have a short video that we will show.
This week, Doñana County salutes key partners in their efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic. The United Drug Superstore, led by owners Greg and Barbara Mitchell, has been a key vaccinator in northern Doñana County. Considering the population of Hatch is only about 2,000 people, the small, locally-owned pharmacy's efforts and impact have been outstanding. The United Drug Superstore team has served the equivalent of not only the entire population of Hatch, but of the surrounding towns and villages as well. On December 28th, they gave their 6,000th COVID-19 vaccination. The trust they have built within the community has been instrumental in vaccinating the northern portion of the county, where many residents may have been otherwise vaccine hesitant. Doñana County salutes the United Drug Superstore in Hatch. Thank you for being a great community partner and resource.
And good morning. I'd just like to provide a quick update. The team at the United Drug Superstore has now administered over 6,640 vaccinations to residents in the northern portion of the county. Thank you to Barbara and Greg Mitchell and their team for all that they've done.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind saying your name for the record, Ms. Bo.
Yes, sir, Amanda Bowen. I'm with the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you. And just the, these Doñana Salutes, how often will they be going out?
We would like to recognize a member of the community that has assisted with the vaccinations and during the pandemic at each BOCC meeting.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
I believe that that completes staff input.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Macias. Then we're on to county elected officials' input. I don't see any other county elected officials, so we'll move on to Commission input. Are there any Commissioners that have any input at the moment? Okay. Then we'll move on to our Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of the regular meeting minutes for January 25th, 2022. If I can get a motion and a second for approval. Moved by Commissioner Ellens. Seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Are there any comments or questions on the meeting minutes from January 25th? Okay, hearing none. Brandy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting minutes are approved. All right, we're on to Agenda Item Number Two. It's proclaim Black History Month in Doñana County. And this morning, we're here to not only proclaim Black History Month and recognize the contributions and individuals of those of African descent that have made and continue to make on the world, our nation, and within our own community. But we decided that, given the nature of the pandemic and what we've been through over the past nearly two years now, we wanted to acknowledge the work by leaders in the healthcare field. This is, as I mentioned, this is especially timely as a nation, as we've continued to struggle with the impacts of COVID-19, and even here locally within our hospitals and all those that are working, even within our Office of Emergency Management and the State Department of Health. So as we celebrate Black History Month, I encourage us to research and acknowledge our diverse achievements by Black Americans and people of African descent. Black history should not just be important to Black people. Black history is American history. Their contributions add to the beauty and the fabric of our country and what makes us great today. We're honored to have this morning with us Mr. Carl Nogoye, nationally-decorated registered nurse from Memorial Medical Center. And back with us again is Ms. Kimberly York, the interim director of Black Programs of NMSU, who will be here to share more about the activities that the community has planned to celebrate Black History Month this year, and Dr. Bobby Green, from the president of the local chapter of the NAACP. So I welcome you all to go ahead and come up, and as you're coming up, I'll ask Mr. Macias if he would read the proclamation. And while we're waiting for Mr. Macias, if I can get a motion and a second to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Chaparro?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Thank you. Mr. Macias, if you wouldn't mind reading the agenda, I mean, sorry, reading the proclamation. Thank you.
Again, a proclamation for the consideration of the Commission. Whereas in light of the global health challenge the country is facing and acknowledging disproportionate impact on African-American communities, the Board of County Commissioners highlights one of our local heroes in healthcare for Black History Month, Mr. Carl Nogoye. And whereas in the spirit of healthcare and world changers of African descent, Dr. Charles Drew, who is credited for discovering a method for long-term storage of blood plasma, Daniel Hale-Williams, who is credited for the world's first open-heart surgery, and Ernest J. Grant, the first male president of the American Nurses Association, recognized as Nurse of the Year by President George W. Bush for his work treating burn victims from the World Trade Center. Black healthcare professionals continue to exemplify compassion and competence in their fields and demonstrate the importance of diversity in the medical field for their patients and the community at large. And whereas Carl Nogoye is an intensive care unit registered nurse who was nationally recognized in 2020 as a Life Point Health Mercy Award winner for the compassionate care of his patients and for his commitment to youth advocacy and volunteerism. Born in Cameroon and raised in France, Mr. Nogoye received a law degree from San Diego State University prior to his pursuit of a nursing, excuse me, of a nursing degree at NMSU. He credits the fulfillment he receives from working with at-risk and vulnerable youth for being the catalyst for his career change. Mr. Nogoye is also the recipient of the Memorial Medical Center Shining Star Award and the Daisy Award, both for the extraordinary care he provides as a nurse. And whereas in addition to highlighting the contributions of Black healthcare leaders in our community, we encourage everyone to support the month of activity sponsored by NMSU Black Student Association in collaboration with Black Programs, Doñana County Community College, and NMSU libraries entitled "Back to Black: Building Leadership, Advocacy, Community, and Knowledge." All events are free and open to the public, but registration is required. Now therefore, the Doñana County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. Again, Mr. Chairman, for you and the Commission's consideration, this proclamation related to Black History Month.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Mr. Nogoye, I'd welcome you to come on up and if you'd like to say a few words. If not, you're more than, I mean, you're more than welcome to, but Dr. Green and Ms. York, you're also welcome to come up and make some comments. But we definitely appreciate, we appreciate all your, all your work, Mr. Nogoye, here locally. I mean, this is, Memorial Medical Center provides healthcare for much of southern New Mexico, not just here in Doñana County, and it's been a critical part of treating those with COVID-19. I know we recognize that within the ICU, so we appreciate all your efforts and congratulate you on the recognition you've received nationally as well.
Thank you. Good morning, the board, the chair, board members, commission of the Commission. I'm glad to be here today. I want to just say I'm very pleased to be here today and to be invited to be here today. I think it's an honor for me to join all of you here in this room today in recognition of the Black History Month. It's not just an honor for me, it's even a bigger honor for you guys to include my name in the proclamation of Black History Month. My parents were great community volunteers, so as a young child, I grew up understanding the value of fairness, equality, compassion, empathy, and community service. So I think that upbringing is what has made me a better man, a better human being, a better nurse, and in general, just a good person and a better dad. We understand how valuable Black History Month is, just like how you stated earlier in your, in your comments. But what I want to say is, I, I don't think the county should continue to use February as a month for the proclamation of Black History Month. Because as Black people, I think we should be able to celebrate Black people every day, not just 28 days in a month or just for the month of February. So that's just my, my take on it. And secondly, what I want to say too is, I do a lot of community service here in Las Cruces. I organize a lot of fundraising to support homeless organizations and vulnerable populations within our community. And I go every day, at least one day a week, with my nursing students to the community, and I go to all neighborhoods in Las Cruces to feed the homeless within our community. And when I do that, there's nothing like race involved in that. I go in every single community. I don't pick a Black community, white community, Hispanic community, or Mexican community. I go to every single community because I do understand that homelessness affects everyone. It's not just Blacks, it's not just African-Americans, it's Whites, all the group that I just stated. So what I want to say to the Board of Commissioners is, I want to, the team for Black History Month is on health and wellness. So what I want to urge you guys is to commit a lot of more resources in improving the lives of the Black community and to champion all those activities that is going to help them lead better lives. That's what I'm going to urge the board members here today. And I want to thank you guys again for this proclamation, but I want to also challenge you guys to go out there to those communities, those communities that don't look exactly like you, that look differently from you, and meet those communities and speak to those people and shake hands, and some of those that haven't met you. And talk to those people and listen to them to see how, as a county, we can help the Black community go through their challenges and the problems that face the Black community in, in general. So that's what I'm going to ask here today. I want to end by using one of the favorite, my favorite quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., he said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. And hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that." So I challenge all of us to be that light that is going to drive the darkness out and for us to work all together like a community, Black, White, Hispanics, Mexicans, Asian-Americans, and everybody, to make not just this city to grow, but a better community for everyone. And I think not until we do that, we don't have a very fair and a very, very credible community for everyone. And again, thank you guys for having me here today and for declaring this month Black History Month, but like I said, it's 365 days in the calendar. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, not to diminish in any way the importance and seriousness of Mr. Nogoye's comments, but he would have had a very successful career as a lawyer as well. And, Mr. Chairman, as you can tell by his commitment to his own personal physical health, I have noticed that at the gym, he has a difficult time getting his shoulders through the door, and he has to turn to the side to get in.
Good morning to everyone, Manager Macias, Chair Sanchez, Vice Chair Murillo, Commissioner Reynolds, Commissioner Ellens, and Commissioner Chaparro. Board of Commissioners, it is an honor to be again in front of you. I want to say thank you. It is not lost on me that Doñana County has been walking the walk for many years. You have partnered with the NAACP for a considerable amount of time, not just today and not just during Martin Luther King Day or Black History Month, but this is an ongoing partnership and a love relationship with the NAACP. And I am grateful for the partnership and the collaboration that we have as a community. This is a good place to live. My parents came here, my mother landed in Vito in the 1930s. My father came here looking for work. They met in a cotton field, not far from here. And so I come from very humble beginnings in Doñana County, right down the road, five miles from here. But still, I've had all the opportunities to get an education, to work, to thrive in this community. And so I am very aware of the obstacles that Black people have had to overcome. It's been a little bit easier here in Doñana County. And so for that, I understand the collaboration and the work that has happened behind the scenes in the manager's office, with the Board of Commissioners, with the treasurer's office, the county clerk's office, the sheriff's office. We all have a good relationship, and so we are fortunate in Doñana County. And I want to say thank you. And so I do respect what Man Nogoye, with excellence, he is an example of Black excellence. I respect what he has said, I agree with what he has said, but I gotta tell you that it's a little bit easier here in Doñana County to accomplish what he is working and what he's doing. So I'm grateful, I thank you. I received the proclamation with the, the honor that it deserves, and I want to say thank you very much, Board of Commissioners and Manager Macias. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Good morning, Manager Macias, Chairman Sanchez, and esteemed Commissioners. My name is Kimberly York, and I am the interim director for Black Programs at New Mexico State University. And I want to start this by just saying, as a transplant from Cleveland, Ohio in 2015, I proudly call Las Cruces home. And I can honestly say, as I have said many times before, that every person, elected official that I have met when I first moved here, they always greet me, including you, Mr. Macias, by name when I see them. And for that, I am grateful. I moved here, I didn't know a single soul, and I feel like I have gained a new family moving here. And I echo the sentiments that have already been said about Doñana County is setting a very high standard for the rest of the world in terms of relationships, relationships, because that's what this is all about. We are one race, and Doñana County sets the bar high about the expectations of people being treated as humans regardless of their walk in life, regardless of where they come from, and regardless of their gender, ethnicity, race, or creed. This has been a very, very blessed opportunity for me to be here. And I do want to specifically acknowledge you, Commissioner Reynolds. You and I go a long way back. We have roots that tie to Ohio, and when I first met you, you were running for treasurer, and I helped with your campaign, and we have been glued to the hip ever since. And so I want to say thank you to you because you are walking the walk. You know, people would rather see a sermon than hear one, and you are the epitome of that, as well as the rest of you all, Commissioners. So I want to say thank you. I also just want to say, on behalf of the Black Student Association and the Black Programs at New Mexico State University, I started as a volunteer in 2015 for no other gain but to support and to serve our students on our campus. And as Commissioner Reynolds will tell you, we've made progress, but we yet continue to fight forward. We remain in a building space that we have been in for 52 years, and it hasn't changed one single bit. And so I'm asking that you all, as Commissioner Reynolds has done, when we meet with our community officials, that you show up to support our students. They desperately need your support. As I said, we've made some progress, but we, they need to see that people like you really care about what's happening to them behind the scenes. And so I too accept the proclamation on behalf of the Black Programs and NAACP, as well as Mr.?
Nogoye.
Nogoye, thank you. It is an honor to stand among giants like these who understand the importance of giving back to this community, and I commit to you that regardless of what my title may be, I am here and I am committed to working alongside you in the trenches with you to continue to move Doñana County forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all very much for everything you said. I agree with how you stop hate with love and all that. It's easy to support leaders, such as at least the three of you and the ones I've met in this community. I enjoyed being at the university with you all when you were talking about your building. I hope I made a difference. I hope I can continue to make a difference. But you know, we're all in the same boat. We just, and we just got to get together and roll in the same direction, and the more of us to get in the same, go in the same direction, the better we're going to be to raise the standard of living for everybody here in the county and in the state. So I'm honored to be invited and a part of the organizations and the things that you guys, you are accomplishing in this county. And I don't see myself as leading, I see myself as following good leaders, and I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Is there any other input from the Commission? Any public input? Okay. Brandy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. That proclamation passes 5-0. Thank you. You guys are excellent right here. I'm going to go this way. Excellent. Attention right here. Big smiles, big smiles. Three, two, one. Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're on to agenda items number three and four, the consent agenda, which will approve by one motion unless there's a commissioner that would like to remove three or four for individual consideration. Commissioner Reynolds, did you have a question?
I think item four, is that still on the agenda?
Yes. Did you have a question, or did you want to pull for separate consideration?
No, I'm sorry. Item four is a proclamation or presentation. A presentation on Sunland Park.
That one is, under the amended agenda, it's item number six?
Okay. I apologize.
No, no worries. So agenda item three is the use of cooperative extension services, CES, contract with its quest for temporary employee services in the amount not to exceed $200,000. And then agenda item four is increased insight network LLC contract to provide additional grant consulting and writing services through June 30, 2022, in the amount of $35,000.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. You're right. This is the one, the online version is the one I was looking at. I apologize.
No, no worries.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda. We have seconded by Commissioner Chaparro. Okay, are there any other comments, input by the commissioning from the public? Okay, Randy, will you call the roll on agenda items three and four?
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. Those items are approved. Okay, we're done. Agenda item number five, which is a letter of commitment with Sacred Wind Communications for Northern Broadband Project, which is going to be presented by Mr. Bob Bunting. While he's coming up to begin, can we get a motion in a second to begin the discussion? Moved by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Chaparro.
Good morning, Chair Sanchez and commissioners.
Provide under their state contract here would be fiber to the home and fiber to the business services that would allow them to provide up to to one gigabit speeds for residents and businesses and and even higher speeds if there's a business that needs that. So what we're what we're really looking at then is improving, you know, several things at once in a single project. We're going to, you know, one, make sure that we're going to own infrastructure that the county can use to promote broadband. So that includes our fiber optic backbone, our empty conduit that could be used by other providers who want to not have to, for example, use our fiber or lease it or something like that. They'd be able to run their own through that conduit, once we're able to come to an agreement on that. And it also lays the groundwork to improve public safety communications and other business, county business communications in the northern part of the county and sees that we're providing broadband services for the underserved and unserved in the northern part of the county. And if I may, I'd like to introduce Misty Willach from Sacred Wind Communications so she can come up and say a few words about Sacred Wind and answer any questions you may have directly for her, and then I'll be right back.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Sanchez. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commission, and good morning, Mr. Mercias. As Bob was pointing out, we have several communities that we're looking to serve that are considered underserved right now by the USDA, I'm sorry, by the FCC. So we're pursuing a USDA Reconnect grant. That grant amount would cover communities that are underserved like Hatch, Rincon, Salem, Garfield, and Radium Springs. The FCC defines broadband as being 100 meg by 20 meg. Most of these locations have 50 meg or less. Some had access to 25 meg or less, which, as we know, in the last two years, that you can't sustain your family going to school, working from home, visiting with family. The 25 meg just isn't going to cut it. So we have a great experience in working with USDA in our U.S. and providing services in rural New Mexico. Most of our services started off in tribal lands, as some of you know. Bob was kind of giving you a little bit of background on Sacred Wind Communications. I want to make sure that everybody understands that there's a little bit of difference. We are part of Sacred Wind Enterprises. The company that I represent is SWC Tele Solutions, which is our unregulated side. So you guys are very familiar with ILAX and ARLAX in this area. We would be an ISP, and we might also seek out CELEX status for SWC Tele Solutions as we have in other areas. The reason it's important to mention that is our grant applications are under the SWC Tele Solutions. The USDA Reconnect Round Two that we won gave a little bit of background in that in the presentation. That's covering about 1,800 homes in Sierra County. It's a little bit different than Doniana in some ways because there's really not any densely populated areas other than TRC. We were serving Hillsboro and Kingston, were probably the most underserved communities in the entire state of New Mexico. In fact, I would say anywhere in the southwest. We are seeing some of those same representations in Doniana County. Northern Doniana County is the most reasonable for us to approach because there is this public safety initiative with building the communications tower in Salem. Our fiber's already there. So it does make sense for us to extend south from TRC and Elephant View. Ideally, we will cover other areas in Doniana County with future grant opportunities. As we've been discussing for the last about six months to a year, many grant opportunities will be coming for infrastructure. And honestly, our company, that's what we do. We don't serve densely populated areas like Las Cruces. There's plenty of competition. One of the reasons that we agreed to do this project and add that third conduit is we want to encourage competition. There have been areas where we have worked with municipalities or counties that it sparked the ILAC to get off their duffs and start serving. You know, if that has the same reaction for Doniana, where some of the incumbents will improve their services, then we feel that our mission is accomplished. Do you guys have questions about the proposal?
Any questions? Commissioner Chapada?
Mr. Chair, can you remind me of the speeds that you anticipate that that will bring to the broadband users from Hatch to Radium Springs? Because you were talking too fast and I didn't get it.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I'm not the greatest public speaker. One gigabit to the home, we could provide even more. We're going to have a minimum of 198 strands available for our use. So in a situation where if, let's say, New Mexico State wants to put a small campus in Hatch, that's something we could support. We could provide them with a 10 gig service, 100 gig service. Fiber is, I don't want to say it's the end-all-be-all, but it is the end-all-be-all right now. We can pretty much support anything we need over a network this large.
And another question, how many households do you anticipate serving from Hatch to the Radium Springs area?
There are about 1,100 homes in that area. There are almost 4,000 homes in the entire grant area, which is north of Hatch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapada. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Misty.
Great.
And we're excited that you decided to move into Doniana County and help us with this challenge. I do have a couple of questions. Yes, I'm aware that you're putting the tower up there for communications for the Sheriff's Department and fire and stuff, and that's all good. How long is our agreement on this? Because you're going to be laying all the fiber, put in a conduit, the 98 strands, we're going to have 98, and you're going to have 98. Is that it?
We'll probably put in more. We'll probably have at least twice that, just because I think we need to be able to support the fiber-to-the-home initiative. So the way we do that is we peel off strands and we put it on basically a cabinet, and from that cabinet, it's distributed to the home.
Well, 98 strands is enough to run the whole county if we can get them extended throughout the whole county, give everybody plenty of speeds. That's a great infrastructure, the conduits. Fantastic idea to be able to get in and splice into it and expand the service in other directions to businesses. I mean, the plan you have is fantastic.
Great, thank you.
What I am curious about is how long is our relationship? It shows here you're going to do the engineering work. Is that just for the installation, or are you going to continue to maintain it as I see something in the country?
Right. Yeah, we do, there is some legislature in front that is being introduced at the state that addresses private-public partnerships. That doesn't exist right now. So we met with your county attorney, and we agreed that we would provide in-kind services, which means that we will maintain that fiber for as long as our agreement, 20 years, 30 years. You know, that's going to be negotiable. In addition to maintaining, we'll also be providing break fix.
Okay, I saw that.
Right. So pretty much no headaches for Doniana County. We'll be taking care of it soup to nuts.
Okay. So, and I think also in part of the agreement here is you're not paying any fees for the use of the infrastructure. And you're going to, basically, the swap is that you're going to take care of our infrastructure while you take care of yours, and that's the usage you get for it, in my mind.
Right, right. We will be, we actually will be investing our own money to install that third conduit. That doesn't rest on the taxpayers.
So are you hoping, are you planning to do a community broadband service that you're going to provide to the homes, and you guys are going to manage that so we're not going to have to do any of that, correct?
As long as we get the Reconnect grant, we'll be able to fiber-to-the-home project. If, for some reason, the Reconnect grant fails, there will be many other opportunities. We also have other ways that we can deploy broadband that would be more cost-effective, that still provide nearly a gig to the home. It's using millimeter wave distributed wireless. We're doing that successfully in some of our tribal areas.
As I say, that's what you do mostly up in the north, is the wave, the wireless actually connection, so.
We have a lot of fixed wireless throughout that, but we do also have copper and fiber. In fact, we've got several fiber-to-the-home communities in Navajo right now.
Okay. This really sounds great. I mean, we'll have a conduit that we can actually use for private and possibly additional public partnerships. There's also an extra conduit that's actually being laid down with no fiber, if I'm reading this correctly.
Correct.
And we can add fiber later to that and have access, and that'll be property that we'll own and be able to lease out to companies.
Yes.
I think this is, I think this is a great deal. The only thing I have a question about is how much it's going to cost for the equipment versus the engineering. And so the equipment, labor, and materials is what you guys are going to get, and then project management is yours, engineering is yours. So, you know, I'd like to see some more detail on the labor and materials, and I'll get that from Bob.
Okay.
But other than that, I think this is fantastic. I hope we can do it throughout the whole county.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate your support.
Any additional questions for Ms. Willach?
Misty, I just want to say thank you. I know we've been in discussions for well over a couple of years, and I know particularly when you were getting the Reconnect, when you awarded the Reconnect grant in Sierra County, but you were able to come into Doniana County, from what I recall, to run up north. But appreciate all your efforts, because, I mean, this is, it's been this, it's been, you know, Bob, I know we've been working through the surveys that we were doing online, trying to get all the information across the county. It's been a huge effort. So it's nice to finally see some of the projects start to come up, and that will serve those in our community, and in particular, this area, I know this is my district, but, you know, it's so important that we connect, we're seeing the colonias in our community, in our county, starting to be connected with high-speed internet in this day and age. As you mentioned earlier, just what we saw during the pandemic, it was, you know, it was really tough. I mean, we tried to provide services through our community resource centers, some wireless, but the community needs more access, which this will provide up north. So I appreciate all the efforts by you, by Bob, and our county staff. So thank you so much.
My pleasure, and I want to thank you guys all for initiating that first discussion. Looking forward to a very fruitful relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any public input? Okay. Randy, will you call the role on agenda item number five?
Commissioner Ellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapada?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Uriel?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
We're on to, or on agenda item number six, which is to review and comment on the Sunland Park Alta Mesa Annexation Petition of 23 Parcels totaling 1,784.6 acres, generally located south of Airport Road, east of Pete Domenici Boulevard, and northeast of New Mexico Highway 9. I believe this is you, Ms. Ainsworth. This is the discussion we had last time.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Chair. Thank you. The reason we're bringing it back, we received some additional information on property owners who are opposed to the annexation. And just to, you know, just to recap, the area that is being proposed to annex is the blue, and the existing city limits of Sunland Park is this reddish color. We received some information from property owners here in the hatched areas that are opposed to being annexed. They did not sign the petition. And you can see, those properties are adjacent to the city of Sunland Park. So without those properties, they could not annex because they do have to be contiguous. And so we brought this item back so that the commission can discuss whether or not to include additional comments in the letter to Sunland Park. Because of that opposition, we wanted to give you another opportunity to potentially add some comments.
And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we have representatives, at least the attorneys for the property owners who may wish to be addressing the commission. I'm not quite clear if they're present here in the, in the, okay. So I'd like for the commission to hear from them, because there is a lot of concern, and now that we're better aware, and you should be aware, that potentially they're encompassing county property as well. If you look up at the very top of the map, let me, let me ask Felipe if he'll, this isn't the map that shows it as clearly. Let's go to another one.
You're talking about this part here, which is the airport road right of way?
All right. So it does say that Airport Road right of way owned by Doniana County.
Yeah. And just to, I mean, just to clarify, when a property, when there is an annexation and there are county roads, we do recommend that those be included just for jurisdictional But that is in that portion of the proposed annexation where the adjacent property owners are not concurring with the annexation.
I have a question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Reynolds. Have we heard from the New Mexico Department of Transportation about their road as well? Have they had, said anything about this annexation?
We have not heard from NMDOT, but similarly, when there's roadways that are owned by NMDOT, we still recommend that those be included. And so they would have to reach out to NMDOT directly to determine if they're opposed.
Okay, thank you. And just my opinion is, I think we should protest this as well, along with the property owners, because of the big gap that it leaves. And I'm not sure that that meets the intention of the contiguous property, you know, to be annexed by a municipality. When I looked at all the state statute that I could read, in the time I had, it appears that the contiguous is pretty much a broad brush approach to what it means to annex property that touches your property. And I think that this, in my opinion, violates the intent of that, just what was meant by that.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. And I will note before we have some, you know, I'll open up to comment, and the only reason I haven't, I guess, asked for a motion or a second, I want to make sure that we understand exactly, we capture everything we want in what we approve. But I know the commissioner should have two letters in front of them. One is from the ST Desert Investment LLC, and the other is from Paseo del Norte LLC as well regarding their input on this item. So I guess if you don't have anything else to add at the moment, Ms. Ainsworth, I'll open it up to those that are here in the chambers to go ahead and come up and say a
Hello. Good morning. My name is Josh Rhodes. I'm with Gordon Davis Johnson and Shane in El Paso. I represent ST Desert Investments LLC, Paseo del Norte LLC, and Mesia Bolson Properties LLC, and their properties are depicted on the map above. Thank you for hearing this item again and hearing our opposition that we want to convey to you with this annexation. As you know, these lands were master planned by the county in 2005. The petitioners own, do own the majority of the acres that are proposed in this annexation, but nine out of the 12 landowners did not sign the petition for annexation, which is a little over, almost 75% of the owners. Our clients have additional lands in this area, thousands and thousands of acres, that, you know, they intend to develop in accordance with the approved master plan. These, it's our understanding that this petition is being brought by these landowners because what their proposed use for the properties does not fit into this master plan, and they're seeking this petition as owning more than 50% of the acres. You know, and it was mentioned already that our lands, that are depicted here, they're only included to satisfy the contiguous requirement of the statute. Without our lands being included, their petition would not meet the statutory requirements for annexation. It's on my understanding that the city manager of Sunland Park spoke to the commission about this project, and he stated publicly that, you know, as the city manager, he would not annex property of people that were in opposition to this annexation. You know, the, I've seen the staff report and the letter that Mr. Chairman sent to the mayor and city council of Sunland Park, they're all valid reasons from a government perspective of reasons why this proposed annexation should not pass. But we just want to give our opposition as private landowners for not approving this There's a master plan that was part of the agenda items between the landowners. We're not a part of that master plan. Our properties aren't a part of that master plan. I'm not aware of, there's been, you know, plans and, you know, for what those future improvements they're planning to develop are, but my clients aren't involved in that and haven't asked to be, but now their lands are being asked to be annexed without their consent. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Then are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I'm looking at this map, which was previous to the current slide.
Felipe, can we go back?
Yeah.
That one, thank you.
If the property, the properties in opposition are not annexed, what does that do to the continuity question in terms of its relation to property and the remaining property is not butting up against the city, is it not?
Correct. So if my client's lands are taken out of the proposed annexation, then it would not pass the statute requiring the lands to be contiguous to the city of Sunland Park boundary lines.
That's what I thought. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mercias?
If there are no other questions by the commission, I just wanted to ask Mr. Rhodes, one, the status or the position that the Mesia Bolson properties, if you're aware of what their position is related to the annexation?
Yes. I confirmed this morning with that entity, their principal is Greg Collins. He confirmed to me this morning during this hearing that he wanted me to address the commissioners and oppose the annexation on his behalf. On behalf of my clients, we sent the letters that you referenced earlier, and we'll be sending the same letters on his behalf as well. And if there's any other landowners that are interested in opposing, we'd be happy to, you know, send those same letters on their behalf.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, without having to absolutely confirm this will occur, should the annexation proceed, is there any legal action contemplated by the property owners?
I'm not sure at this time. If we have legal action available to us, we would certainly consider it, and I would, knowing who my client is, he would likely move forward with legal action if that remedy is available to him.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that position is important in order whether the commission itself indicates that if there is legal action that proceeds, that the county would be prepared or would consider joining in that effort. Because, again, we've come to the commission many times. The commission, I think, almost uniformly, has expressed concerns related to some of the actions related to annexations, not only related to this property, but other properties as well. But we've gone no further than that.
Yeah.
This is something that is potentially so egregious. The only reason these properties are being, obviously, included in the annexation is because the annexation cannot be completed without these properties. And it's basically the classic leapfrog. You're trying to get to another property, so you pick up everything along the way, even if they're opposed. And so this is a little bit on the extreme side on the part of the city.
I think this-
And I think they should know if we're going to include the additional concerns that are being voiced here today, that we be prepared to go as far as that it would, that the county would consider either joining or initiating legal action.
I know I would support. I think this, the information provided today in these letters, I think, is particularly concerning. And I think we've already, obviously, I think of the discussion we had on our meeting, I think on the 25th, we were discussing these concerns. And I think this is, you know, every time we bring up our concerns with the city of Sunland Park, they're cast aside. And I think, given this nature of information, I know I would support what you're suggesting, Mr. Mercias, with, you know, if there is legal action we can take, I would support that. Commissioner Reynolds?
Mr. Chair, yes, I actually agree with Mr. Mercias and also yourself. I'd like to read a small section of the state statute 373, limitations on annexation, for a second, if you don't mind. This is, it's not relative, but it's not relative exactly, but it's very close. It says, "No municipality may annex territory within the boundary of another municipality or territory within a Class A county," which we are, "with a population of more than 300,000 persons unless approved by the Board of County Commissioners for that county." We're not 300,000. That's the only thing that keeps us from being able to participate in this. We're like 230. So in my belief, though, when I read the state statute, it says that a county, a Class A county, should at some point in time have some oversight of annexation by municipalities because they're taking land, you know, that we basically managed and maintained and have invested a lot of money in infrastructure in this area. So I totally support the idea that if we move forward with this, and if you guys, if there is legal action to be taken, that we participate in that with all the resources that we have to try to stop this one, because I think it is, I agree with Mr. Mercias, is very egregious, what they're trying to accomplish. And I think that we should lobby to try to get this statute changed, so we can participate in the annexation of property in the county, to lower it down to 230,000 or whatever we need to with our legislatures. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Chapada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Rhodes. I support your clients. I think what is being done is just not right. And so you can count on this commissioner's support.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Chapada.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ellens?
Unless there's an attorney-client issue, can you tell me why your clients don't want to be annexed?
My clients, Paseo del Norte and ST Desert Investment, their entities and affiliated entities, I think they own about 17,000 acres. That's included in the master plan for Doniana County for this area. They've been, they've been here for decades. They've invested. They have future investments planned. You know, they're investing in accordance with the master plan. I believe they had a big, big, you know, assistance in creating the master plan for what they desired and wanted, when they worked with the county, to have this master plan developed. You know, we're, don't know what would happen if this annexation goes through. We're not a party to the master plan agreement. That was a part of the agenda between the petitioning landowners. We have no idea what they're really trying to do. We don't know, you know, we haven't been involved in their planning, and, you know, we're sticking with the master plan that's been in place for almost 20 years. And, you know, we don't see any reason to agree otherwise, especially not just when we're forced an annexation down our throats by the petitioning-
I mean, we've sent the letter. We just need to authorize you the ability to take action as needed, or?
The way I would approach it, because you've already taken action previously, that you would make a motion to amend the prior communication in opposition or raising concerns with the annexation to basically-
Did you write that down?
the, this additional language be included. "The county does not consent to the annexation of any county-owned territory within the area of the proposed annexation and hereby objects to such annexation."
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Owens.
And I would add to that, that we are authorizing, even taking whatever action necessary, including going to court in order to defend this position.
Okay, and I certainly would indicate that the additional language would be that the county would, will consider joining in or taking legal action related to the proposed annexation.
Okay.
And so, I would, the motion would just be to amend the prior letter of, what's the title on the letter?
It's just comments.
Oh. The letter communicating the county's comments and position related to the annexation to include the concerns that were expressed here at today's meeting. I think that that motion would suffice.
Okay.
And it'll add the language that reflects the position of the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Chaparro?
Is it possible for me to make a motion to amend the prior letter that the county sent that does not consent, that also, that we are not in agreement with a prior, regarding the prior communication of Sunland Park to annex what was stated in the previous letter? Does that make sense?
I think that any motion to amend the prior communication to include the concerns that have been voiced here at today's meeting and authorizing the county manager to modify the prior letter.
So moved as to what county manager stated. Thank you.
Okay, so-
Ms. Yes?
Yes, sir.
Has the prior letter been sent?
No, it hasn't, but technically, the commission-
Approved it.
Oh, you did.
But we told them we would be sending amendment comments.
Okay. So, my understanding is that the letter was sent encompassing the prior, but that the city of Sunland Park has been given notice that there will be a second letter coming including these additional. So, it is an amendment to the prior letter since its action has already been taken on it.
A second. Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Chaparro, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Is there any input, additional input by the commission?
I have one more third comment.
Commissioner Reynolds?
You know, I agree with you that we've laid a plan out for the use of the land down there and what we plan to do for 20 years. And to not continue to protect that and defend that position is going to be damage to the citizens, it's going to be a damage to the whole plan of the county, the economic plan that we have down there, and this actually puts us in a really bad position to go back and change plans that we've been working already for 20 years. So, that's the reason I really vehemently disagree with this annexation at this time. If they can sit down and work with us, and we can come up with a common plan and strategy to use that land that benefits all communities, then we might actually have that discussion. But until then, I think we should stand our ground. Thank you.
We'll also be sending the same letters that we sent to you, to the city of Sunland Park officials, the mayor, city manager, city council, Planning and Zoning Commission. We just sent it to you guys first because the hearing was scheduled for today.
And, Mr. Chairman, let me just add also, although it may have been our practice in the past to not object, they're basically bringing in county property. And actually, along with the, what Commissioner Reynolds has pointed out, there's also Section 3-4, 3-7-4, that basically says that they have to get the county's permission to include, to include county property in the annexation. And our objection in and of itself would break the continuity. So, I would suggest that we be allowed to include an objection to that as well.
Thank you.
So, I'm just noting it for the record, because if anybody has any kind of questions related to the motion and what it encompassed, it encompassed, you know, a support of the opposition voiced by the property owners, and we already have the properties that are identified here on the map, along with the counties. Some additional language in terms of that, the inappropriateness of using, objecting properties to leapfrog and basically opposition to the city annexing county property into the city, county-owned property into the city. And it's basically those three factors.
Where is the county-owned property?
If you look at the very top of the map that's on the screen, you see Airport Road-
Yes.
And as the, that, the property in between Paseo del Norte and Saint Desert Investments, that's that little stretch up there that's a different color, that's county-owned property and right away. That leads right up to the beginning. Yes, I believe that that's the property.
I was trying to zoom in.
Yeah, because Airport Road, Airport Road is a county.
I don't know if you can zoom in from here or not.
I can. It's a PowerPoint.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, based on what Mr. Ms. Yes has pointed out, I think we should also include this, this section of the statute in 3-7-4, A and B, mainly B in this section, where it says specifically, "The land owned by any United States instrumentalities or the state of New Mexico or political subdivision New Mexico may not be annexed to a municipality without otherwise, which would otherwise be eligible for annexation." So, that's Section B actually specifically points out that they have to have our permission to do the annexation. Yeah. 3-7-4, B specifically says that.
Forgive me, Commissioner. B actually says territory may be annexed, so-
Excuse me, so say it away.
It's actually subsection A, because it says-
Sorry.
"May be annexed to a municipality upon the consent of the authorized agent of the government." Okay, so, we basically would be denying consent. We are not consenting to the annexation of any county-owned property.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Ms. Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the, to amend the previous comments that we just noted today. So, if there's no other input, Brandy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Owens.
Before I vote, could you restate the motion?
The motion is to amend the prior communication, the prior comments that were provided to the city of Sunland Park, to now include the expressions of concern related to the annexation of these particular properties that are objecting to annexation, that we also indicate the potentiality and the objection to the annexation of any county-owned property, and the inclusion of the county's position, its willingness to either support litigation or commence litigation related to this annexation.
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Appreciate your help. Okay, let's see. Agenda item number seven, under hearing and ordinances, it's an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of Doñana County, New Mexico taxable industrial revenue bonds for Hecate Energy Santa Teresa LLC project in a maximum principal amount of $120 million to provide funds to finance the acquisition, construction, equipment, and installation of a project to be constructed for the purpose of generating electricity for an industrial revenue bond project for use by Hecate Energy Santa Teresa LLC. Ms. Hainsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I'd like to present both items seven and eight together since they are related. The second ordinance is for the other IRB, which goes with this project, and this one is a maximum principal amount of $60 million. This project is for a large solar field, which would be servicing surrounding areas and providing renewable energy in the county and surrounding areas. We did have one letter of comment from the Flood Commission regarding potential loss of revenue, and so, we had some discussions with the applicant and were able to agree on that they will provide a fixed payment to the Flood Commission. That's in addition to the pilot that they would be providing to the county, and that would be a combined amount of $6,000 a year. And the reason that that figure was agreed upon was if we looked at the pilot and the percentage that would have been allocated to the flood based on their percentage of tax that they receive, then this is, this amount is approximately that amount. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward. They will be developing these properties for solar, and they will have the benefit of the, or no taxes paid, paying the pilot at 25 percent, and it would be a 20-year project. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions regarding, I guess, agenda item seven?
Chair, I just have a quick question. Is the term of this 20, 25 years?
It's 20 years, which is the standard.
Thank you. I didn't, I hadn't gotten to that part yet. So, can I get a motion to, I guess, we'll start with agenda item number seven, which, I had a motion to approve agenda number seven, which is an IRB in the maximum principal amount of $120 million. I approve, I make a motion. Motion is by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Owens. Any input, public input? Okay, Brandy, will you call the roll, please, on agenda item seven?
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
It has an ordinance number 325-2022.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy. Okay. Now, we're on, let's see, we'll look at agenda item number eight, which is the IRB in the maximum principal amount for $60 million for Hecate Energy Santa Teresa LLC 2. If I get a motion and a second on approval?
So-
Moved by Commissioner Owens.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Any input, any public input? Okay, Brandy, will you call the roll on agenda item number eight?
Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaparro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
That also has an ordinance number of 326-2022.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Ms. Hainsworth.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment for the public about these IRBs, because it looks like we're just giving a lot of money to a company, but the fact is that if we didn't support their establishing a business here in the state, we wouldn't get any tax money. So, what we're doing is we're basically just sharing some of the tax with them so that they have a more, a higher probability of being successful, and it becomes more of a public, a private partnership as opposed to just a company coming in. So, I don't know if all the public understands that or not. It's not that we're giving away money as much as we're just sharing some of the money we have so we can ensure the success of the operation, and I just make sure they understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Okay. Brandy, are there any correspondence?
Yes. We have Stephanie Loserin versus Doñana County, Juanita Duran versus Doñana County, and John Edward Juarez versus Doñana County.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. Okay, well, we've reached the end of our agenda, so if there are no objections from the board, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 10:34 a.m.